Please, sir, with standing in front of the Senate.
You're welcome. Eric, I would just say, thanks for the evening. Thank you for bringing us all together. Thank you for your organization, protection, and then our community board. Help us to make right decisions. Help us to make sure we're being truly loyal to you. Do the right things for our citizens. Eric, I'd like to say, thank you for beautiful weather. Thank you for all the pretty help we can get. For more, just put your arms around the ones that are going through some illness or whatever issues or problems they may be having. Please touch them, protect them, and reward them, raise them up.
Coming. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its law.
Alright guys, so that's how we look at it. The two primary meetings, February 20th of 2025 and March 6th, 2025, are any additions or relations to either one. Eric, not saying that they're both approved by activation. We want to have a great bids contract, a great expenditure. There's no objection to cancel agenda items three A through three E. Will be considered consent agenda. We'll let John Hart and our political supervisor present all of them. I'll put it before you. No objection. Hey, John?
How do you do?
Good.
Sorry, first one is a plumber, engineer, and community development. Park wants me to purchase five new half-ton per cab. Truck's to be replaced, ranging in age from twenty to twenty-six years old. Bids were received on February 18th, 2025. I recommend counsel through the local community specifications submitted by Linda for an amount of $201,665. Next, utilities department needs purchase two new one-ton battery cap service trucks. One new vehicle will replace seventeen-year-old half-ton truck. And the other will be a much-needed addition to the crew. See, our bids were received on February 18th, 2025. I recommend counsel approved below bid submitted by Linda for an amount of $131,765. Next, the local work department needs purchase two new battery cap half-ton trucks. Vehicle is to be replaced, ranging in age from twenty-one to two-years-old. See, our bids were received on February 18th, 2025. I recommend counsel approved below bid, these specifications submitted by Bill Brennan for an amount of $79,010. Next, the local work department needs purchase one three-quarters ton battery cap truck. The new vehicle will replace twenty-six-year-old three-and-three-fourth ton truck. See, our bids are also approved on February 18th, 2025. I recommend counsel approved below bid, these specifications submitted by Bill Brennan for an amount of $44,465. Last one, this local work department needs purchase one three-quarters ton per cab truck. The new vehicle will replace twenty-six-year-old half-ton truck. See, our bids were received on February 18th, 2025. I recommend counsel approved below bid, these specifications submitted by Bill Brennan for an amount of $47,975.
John, any questions? If you have a question, ask the question.
I have a question. All of those fees I think I've been doing there, I mean, um, who's that man I gave you?
Uh, um.
Oh, I'm not getting to.
I don't see.
I have questions.
Is it thirty-eight thousand dollars or the first one?
So I think it's a little bit.
See, seven-five, I don't know. Seven-five. I don't remember getting on that.
I was asking.
Oh, that, that was. That was maybe about a little, come on, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars and the thirty-nine thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars in space. All of these, these are the same on that one. They were acting as if they need that kind of stuff. These are the last one.
Um. First, the purchasing requirements. It doesn't matter what state you're in. There's no preferential tripping to any dealers, whether they're local or from their city. It would matter as far as service. It would be easier if they look for sellers like that, that has dealers to service, not everybody buy. It is four, said we buy four from somewhere else in the land. Maybe they'll price it more. They'll say a service truck, warranty is everything.
We're all ready. I mean, we don't need to be on, I don't need to be ready.
Yeah. So.
We had this discussion. We did have this discussion, we wanted to be the only guy in college, councilors. Or let, maybe local company events or different things. Now, it was, thank you, Kelly, just a bad fire thing, the locals, that was still a issue, you know? Then the base started losing out on these, but it was.
Right. So, or if, if you need to.
Right, so that's, yeah. If you're supposed to.
It's, it's as far as servicing, it doesn't count that stuff. And warranty, they hurt the warranty.
That your shop does.
And you, I imagine, unless it's warranty, you'll be there until the end.
Alright, can you hear the questions? Counsel. Thank you, counsel, your prayers.
Eric, I make a question, you're appropriate. In others, three A through three E, as presented.
Second. Motion to the second, all in favor, your hands. Counsel, thank you, God, thank you. I want to have consideration for request approved new contract for public transportation services in the city of Alhaska, Mary Hoppe. Public Works Director. Present.
You go ahead, you did yourself. Good.
You believe that, yes.
On March 17th, American Council approved a contract with Public Transportation to provide transportation to the city of Austin. By our own man, Mr. Washington, on paper, from the service. The option to renew the contract to perform previous, which is on your contract. The contract has ended, as they're currently operating, for that contract extension. The last that they're currently contracting began on March 31st of this year. That would end eight, that would be eight months extension, April, something like that. The reason for the contract extension is, our city of Austin received notification from the Department of Transportation on March 8th, 2024, stated that RRP could not be used for, well, received notification that RRP was only allowed for engineering and architectural projects. So, we had to re-put upon the RRP. It effectively be a process for a normal solicitation of third-party contracts. The RRP was distributed by a city purchasing agent, repurchase respondent, River North Transit, HBS Connect Court, and RSTN responded. The response, the response was reviewed, and the response was reviewed scored by committee, existed the city manager retired. The assistant city manager, after many, our partner, Richard Stevens, city councilman, Andy Gibb, city councilman, Senator Two, and my several works, the director, Black Allen. The committee scored proposals to the Sunday, the Georgia Department of Transportation Department for the 5307 grant. Four practitioners were used to score them. The first one, advantageous, the second advantageous, the third disadvantage, and the fourth, uncertain. The score was submitted to the city of Austin personated, and then told, this score was told. At the end, River North received the high score. River North had been selected and agreed upon by the committee to continue to provide transit service to the city of Austin. The city of Austin was approved for that year, 5307, 5307 grant. And reached for our transit service this year, 2025. The state's max is approved as a proposal for this year, 2025. Options for us tonight, one, approve the contract with River North Transit. Provide public transportation for the city of Austin, or option number two, even not approve the new contract with River North Transit, provide public transportation service to the city. A couple of things to add, the new contract will be, the initial part will be a two-year contract. And we have three one-year options that you contract with both parties, River North, IQ, and City of Austin. We have same models from five thirty tonight, they still be running, they're in contract, so nothing ever changed. We also have the option to cancel the contract as of March 31st, 2026. If you choose to keep cancel the contract, we have to give a limitation notice, and write. As far as the funding, you have the funding, the federal government provides us eight percent. The state will provide ten percent, and the state is responsible for ninety percent. Upon the operational line, the federal government provides us eight percent, and the state is responsible for ninety percent. The state will not provide any funds for operation fees. Um, so, myself and staff, we're gonna make option number one, to approve the contract with River North Transit to provide our public transportation service. I'll take any questions.
Counsel. Let's do it.
I have a question. Since we got shot, do you even know how many awards we've done, or, uh, I guess initiation of, would be?
I mean, of course, we've seen a lot of that.
Yeah, the awards, it's like, uh, being innovative, or something like that. We've gotten different awards and things that's going on.
I'm not sure how many awards you've ever received, but.
I think, I think we've gotten two.
Yeah, it's just.
We've gotten two.
And then lots of accolades from, from, some girls, and others on, some awards, well.
The reason I asked, now, this day, we've gotten like a fund, you have to take it, you, since we got the contract going forward, like we said, trying to think how the box will open, because I was just noticed, you know, some other cities who have started having this type of transit. They've got awards and they've been funded, different kind of funding, because they've been innovative and doing things like that. And like we said, we got them for two years, and they can do a lot of different types of things.
Yes, sir.
And I was, when we got, when we hit this contract, I was wondering, you know, how can we do this? Maybe try some different things, so that we can, you know, maybe do awards and different things we're doing. Because some other cities was starting to act like, you really, you know, asking them, because they didn't want us to.
Yes, so, can I ask you that question? As far as awards, well, yes, I would like to get more, but in the past four months, I've been contacted by local cities in Southern Georgia. As far as Arizona, they have started to acquire a lot of program on transport transit. Um, certain cities are gonna have, both like soccer, and they're doing a little bit of a national transportation system, and going through a micro-transit system that we're currently using. So, we get, I'm getting a lot of phone calls about the transit system that we're running. I was also asked to go down to Bangor last year to be one of the speakers at the transportation center that we hosted. So, it was me and a speaker from North Carolina speaking about the micro-transit system that we're currently running. Um, yesterday, there was a meeting from South Georgia RDC. Had meeting, there are specific ways of getting the award. I was to be a reasonable listener to the state with the micro-transit system that we're running, possibly trying to merge it with the county system. So, we're getting comments, we're getting, I'm not gonna say accolades, but we're getting notice of.
Yes, we are seeing, I hope we get that with our son, too, if we have to. That's what I'm thinking about.
Yes, sir.
I know initially, we were told, at least, and when we came to the goal that we cannot stand that that's mildly amiable, we cannot interfere with Uber and other stuff, and taxis, and things like that, correct? I worry that, I was not.
So, we all want to do our part, etc.
That was one of the things that's, in the 5307 contract, is the public transit that we put forward, we not interfere with local businesses, of the local just, you know? Their opportunity to continue their business.
So, we have to, so we're still, our need that contract, we have to maintain that, or can't get stupid, start up in the summer, maybe five, nine.
I mean, the, the.
I'm asking, because I know, I know it's funding, and we got hours, I get all that, just if we do this contract, that, down the road, the possibility.
If we have a contract, that's, that's a possibility, but of course, as we said earlier, there'll be additional funding. I don't need additional funds to support that transit service. And that's one of the things that's, that's what we're proposing, that we're exploring now. That is one of the topics that came up, additional models, additional vehicles, and we're working on that, to try to get additional funding, preferably with people matched, to make the lines.
I have a lot of people that tell me all the time, they wish that we could offer on Saturdays, definitely Saturdays.
Definitely, that was one of the questions on Saturday, that South Georgia, which we should put out, and it's more hours, the weekend time. So, I'll ask on the table, but there's always, everyone at the table says the same issue. We're trying to find ways to plan additional hours, additional vehicles.
Will they allow us to do the, uh, we talked about rentals of vehicles, amortizing, and even a bigger knowledge that costs.
Oh, yes, and that, once again, all the questions that you're all asking, we're exploring that with the commission. One of the things that, or, that's one of the tools present, for example, we buy a family truck, someone off at the mall, or at Walmart, having a drop-off point, a shelter, and have businesses advertise on that booth, so you can recruit some money, you can offset all the costs. So, instead of just having a regular rack, having like digital, so that way you can change the consequence, instead of having just one image up there. We have a visual where he changes it every thirty seconds, every minute. So, but ABC groups sponsor that particular time stop, but they don't pay the, 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 so we're all trying to check into the options of trying to offset the cost, what's it?
And one of the things, we're, we're gonna utilize CNS spending to purchase vehicles, and please come back to the, uh, whether it's, as we move forward the contract, if it's approved tonight, uh, the vehicle would allow us to purchase more hours.
If we expanded those hours, we get to take out 5307 grant, and then, but then we saying, we ain't competing, we expand, will that be competing? Eric, additional hours that we run the vehicles will increase the per-hour rate. So, per-hour rate is locked in currently at sixty-seven dollars per hour. So, if those vehicles were in additional hours, we can just start with that. So, the 5307 grant allows us so much money. So, if we, if I lost all those funds, then the city will be responsible. Okay.
No questions?
Alright.
Counsel, any questions, or suggestions?
Well, I mean, not to start a conversation about this, but maybe we talked about. But not to, if we get asked on a man, and then they say, well, how much is it? I say, it's dollars, for one ride, an additional dollar, very good, that's, that's correct. I mean, they're, they're like, why are you so cheap? You know, I, 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 we're not charging two bucks a head, you know, and all set, you're all sitting, I guess, two dollars, you know? But I say that to say, I mean, I really think, in our situation, if we want to extend the hours, and we wanna get people ability to get to Walmart, or wherever they want on Saturday, then there has to be some way that we levy something to help offset that cost. And if that's just charging everybody two bucks across the board, whether it's one ride, five riders, and just costing dollars.
I think that's what, that's what, about the, 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 where you're gonna make sure that's something that you can do. A lot of the funding side is, is not holidaying, it's gonna be different.
I mean, I'm saying, that's, that's all, it's steep. I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, we're getting everyone, it's two bucks, I mean, it's two dollars for me, whether I get in there or not, but I don't think anybody else is getting in that's gonna go, I'm not gonna get in, because I got here for a car.
Yeah, all of those, all of those options, you know, as, and we do, we have to coordinate with, uh, GIs, to make sure that we're applying the 5307. So, everything that you mentioned, extending the hours to the fair box, all of those things are options.
Okay.
Well, I think we also need to keep in mind, two bucks for us.
Now, listen, that's not, man, it's, it's, it's two dollars. I mean, you go up there and you, you pay for a ride, a ride, I mean, you pay for a ride, you gonna pay two bucks. Being the A guy, so, you know, you're gonna say, you're gonna say, you're gonna pay two bucks. How might we go about each other? I mean, it's not like you're gonna coordinate, it's all, okay, hey, you pay two dollars, I'm gonna pay a dollar.
Well, I mean, the way the software works, the one-dollar point comes into play, if you put an additional wire. If someone has booked, it probably just gonna be the two dollars, so it won't be, all right, you book a ride, and if they book a ride, dollars in the same direction. Depending on the time that everybody, the software will recalculate that driver to come by and pick up the vehicle. As if one, if they're trying to, you know, you're getting new classes.
Counsel. So, I agree with the group's passion for the service.
Service. So, this conversation will be expansion of the service, and they'll know.
It's there to the urgency, yeah, for the urgency, it's where I sit in this. That's all I want to go already.
It's service.
Okay, that's, that's, the only exception is when you block the hard drive, so that is, we would like to prove the software is sort of contract, be different.
So, thank you.
Okay, there it is. Thanks, counsel, your prayers.
Mayor, I make a question, do you approve the new contract with River North Transit?
Second. Motion to the second, all in favor, your hands. Counsel, the votes are, every love, not that. Alright, look, the funding request, I have four, four A, consideration for request to be filled, two, three hundred eighty-five horsepower pumps located in Porto Road, River North Force Bank Station. It's far. Thank you. Good, there, counsel, please. This is three mill, two, three hundred eighty-five horsepower fly pumps located in Garnetown River Lift Station. Commissioned in 2016, these pumps were small, were pumped with waste water. The Garnetown, it was at Y, in River Lane, was started at the Rymerton. Through a six-foot small force main to a Gucci water pollution control plant. Without these pumps, the Gucci control pad would not have seen any flood, causing seven percent of the city of Austin's waste water going through the river. Done some little bit of research, um, one, one of these new pumps is gonna cost us around, over about two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We, we, we are, that's a piece, that's each. We are rebuilding, these are two of them, for this, for a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, question you might ask yourself, well, how long will these rebuilds all last, in six, eight years? So, I kinda looked at, you know, two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for one new one, but we can rebuild them a lot cheaper if it's six or eight years lifespan out of them. So, um, we have four total pumps at each station, we've already put it in two for F Y twenty-six upon approval. So, we can, get all these pumps, we have four now, so we'll just rebuild them, but wear rings, sleeves that are going there, impellers, um, that is part of this rebuild. And so, the stat record managed to approve the sole source submitted by Zalem, which the sole source looks like, um, the amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-one cents. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Counsel. Jason, thank you. Counsel, your prayers.
May I have a question, will you approve this? That's the same.
Second, all in favor, so, thank you, counsel. Jason, I made consideration for request approved, and it's emergency suicide system prepared, is your approval?
Yes, sir, so, as all, you all know, from January sixth, two thousand twenty-five, six, seven, discovered that Sher Creek, the range of it from, and then we carried it and we held, which caused the sewers to run over, and it was Sher Creek basin. RPI on underground services was listed to establish, to maintain the mercy bypass to isolate the damaged portion of that city's gravel sewer system. They basically, part of that scope, if you look at existing grabbing sewer main, provided installed, maintained mercy bypass, provided installed, maintain plus minus twenty-four hundred feet of twelve-inch shore main, pump, rental, pipe rental, and maintenance from one seven twenty-five to two seven twenty-five. Um, I will let you know, um, that's our engineering and utilities working together. Um, this, the actual bid for the actual repair of the Sher Creek line, uh, will be built, this will be April tenth. So, we are hoping that we will have a bunch of this left, and we'll go ahead and we're gonna bid out the actual repair of this. Because once you said about the pass, it's a long reverse. So, my staff are working on right now, trying to get some equipment upon approval of the budget, to try to be able to do some of this stuff ourselves. But once we can stop it, it's not a reverse, we can go out for bid on this. So, this will be our bid as an actual repair of this line. So, on stat record managed to approve payments, RPI on the ground, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars for the mercy bypass installed, in the first month rental, for Sher Creek mercy sources to prepare. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Yes. Jason, thank you, within thousand years for consideration.
Mayor, I'd like to ask you a little, please, RPI.
Second. Second, all in favor, your hands. Counsel, thank you. Jason. Consideration for request approved, and emergency repairs of Sher Creek, monitoring, or to the force main consolidation.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, so, the mayor, as you said, the last, counsel, we talked, mentioned about this Garnetown Force Main. Um, on January sixth, same time of two thousand twenty-five, six, seven, discovered a during a severe rain event, which occurred on November seventh, um, the string main of Sher Creek had stabilized and eroded, the traffic main. Um, the stabilization and erosion exposed a thirty-inch double iron, um, Garnetown River Force Main, in such a way, basically put the city at substantial risk of an environmental disaster. This thirty inches from the river, if this main put a bus in, you see the pictures, uh, you could have major, major danger still. So, um, the city staff approved it, and honored links to protect the force main, act away from damage and injury due to the impact of weathering. RPI was already there, working on the bypass, and it was just closer to the same vicinity of Sher Creek. Uh, their services was solicited to make the necessary repairs. Um, the scope of work was they cleared it, and took the fifty brush and the green, provided installed one, thirty-inch belter strings, ensure after closure of the subiron force main, provided installed approximately five hundred and seventy-sixty yards of cement clay fill, to reconstrue it, the freight bank, provided installed plus or minus six thousand five hundred meters worth of flex net, which is basically erosion control. Um, so, and then last year, they provided installed C and M, to distribute areas to order to stabilize this here. Stat record managed to approve payments, RPI in the amount of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars for this mercy repair to Sher Creek Army, Garnetown Force Main, and stay up with us. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
What about transit? Other questions? Jason, thank you. Counsel, your prayers.
Thank you, Mayor, but you're, you're asking.
Second. Second, all in favor, your hands. That's like, Jason, thank you. Final, regular, I did that, I have the consideration for request of abandoned pump utilities along, you hear from the road right away, down, down, city engineer. Present. Brilliant.
Uh, so, I think you're about, the last, I said, that's what I, I, um, this one's very, very important. Uh, there's an existing easement, uh, on the east property. There is, if you can scroll down, this would show, I think, it would be, it's, it's, uh, very last sheet. Here, show, alright. Alright, so if you look at the, the blue dash line, is existing twenty-foot drainage utility easement, which runs along the west, so, the east property down here, uh, the eastern most, it's property off, near the intersection of two forty-one and four. Um, the city is in, the delta, has, has some good plans for utilities, etc., in this area. Um, and we are in the process of making improvements, and this is what gave construction of those improvements. Uh, the last easement that we needed was a, in front of this property, along the western most property down here, uh, of the western property, or ACE. So, basically, what we're pushing to do with ACE is the abandonment of this one, uh, driven to utility easement, and especially where the dedication has. is the abandonment of this one, uh, drainage and utility unit and the condition in which the dedication of equivalent size, one foot utility unit on the western side of the property. So it's a one for one trade off with them. Um, they've already signed an agreement, uh, the eastern agreement, and closing, uh, should be taken notice shortly. Uh, the closing is contingent on, possibly, so, um, we are formally requesting, and they can have the interest of the easement, the east has no interest in utilities or creative function. Uh, there's a pipe, there's a swale, there's, uh, power, or a hardway, these water sewers, there's no, uh, plans to install any of that, so. And so, any questions from that on this?
I'm just gonna ask, this is my question, I think that's okay, but with that, we, our city got no, we don't have, we, is that easement to get access to another part of the city to proceed in the line?
No, man, that easement doesn't have to. If the topography of Atlanta, um, that easement location doesn't run itself to useful as for the city. So the, the, on the western side of that east property is lower than the eastern side of the east property, and so if we retain this east, we're gonna lose it. We have, we have a deep sewer, uh, we're already gonna have to put a deep sewer on the western side, so it'd be financially feasible to put it on the eastern side.
Just ask, because it's a middle area, one time, and the city ain't got into this as well, and it was a private company, private club.
I.
That's how I understand it.
Yes, sir, there's no, the city has a company interest on the back end of this, saying it's just another, it's another private company. Um, we don't have any existing infrastructure, we'll have to reschedule it back there. Any other questions?
That thing. Counsel, your ears for action.
Ready to everyone to feel good.
Second. Question and second, all the favors for man. Counsel, thank you. Move on to the citizens who can hear portions of the meeting, we have to, we've got to board and state your name and address, so if they happen to the record. Our policy requires that we stay under three minutes, so the others have time to be heard, please track all captains, the council as a whole. It's intended to be individual members of the council today, it's our policy, and the call will be received almost immediately. Just when we ask the groups, one address the council, does it, your most spokesperson, again, and serves up all that time to be heard. Having said that, any citizens who should be heard at this time, please step forward. I hope you.
Uh, here. Bobby Moensky, uh, I have one time at both of the boulevard, um, here to talk about, uh, click fix. Uh, there's a huge disconnect, um, the push for the city to encourage citizens to use simple fixes and the private agencies who are charged up executing those simple fixes when they are reported. I have to be, twenty-one click fixes, and I did myself on medical on the gas station, over the period of four years. And they, we established last time about here, people in council, that each area had, uh, closed out literally, uh, these click, several click fixes, over fifty of them, with no actual take. This is, not only is nature odd, but we also have Angela Gray of Stonerun, which is also, that's very similar. There's a, there's a litter problem in, in, in the city of Sarce up there, Sarce Fire Department on, uh, uh, Fire Station Two, go East Park Avenue, it runs down one mile branch, comes along behind the gas station, we've all taken a reach here. One of the, uh, see click fixes, twenty-one click fixes, Angela Gray had commented, she has said, quote, city marshal I went on site, spoke to the property, she is aware of the problem, values area and property in better condition. This is of course a very high pressure period, and so Angela and I were the cleaners, and they did fifty-four point one. A marshal will keep an eye on the property. This was August eleventh, twenty twenty-two. That was several years ago. Nothing happened to the property, nothing was issued on the site, it should have several more instances where, uh, forty years has been reported. Nobody went up there, it, it issued a citation, nobody followed up, nothing, and the place is still trashed to this day, it is March twenty twenty-five. Continuing on to that same area, if you go to that fire department, the same route that I'm talking about, Angela Gray has said there is a secret contract, it's paid two hundred thousand dollars for thirty, thirty, thirty miles from now. One of those, after their run of prayers completed, came out, the Dodge I figures that came out, is the clearest to ever seen it. Like I said, it was insisted to see click fix to be cleaned up, and the contractors wanted to clean it up. And given this one, I'm very hopeful, but she talks about how to clean up, how, how the first, from the fire department, from the action, and the water down to the gas station pit and issue, and it took a day and a half to pick up trash, because they typically don't do this. You're paying us to make a contract, pick up trash, and they're not doing this. All those things in the fixing. There's one here from Richard Carlton, where they kicked back and forth, Angeles, initial rallies, and Shaward, and it's still sitting open. On Carl, from July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, Carl Turetter reassigned this issue to Angela Gray. And it's been open ever since, and it has been up to like two more for, for something. So the courage should be for these see click fixes, not for one of your, you know, in those apartments. And ask them to do the job, and they take it.
Are any of the citizens who should be heard at this time?
Excuse me? Oops, okay. I'm bored.
Thank you. My name is Teresa, and I'm back. I've been away, uh, well, I've been out of my house for a year or two, I was sold, took my house off. So I had a, you know, inside and outside. So I stayed in the hotel, over a year. I thought by the time I got back to Holly Drive, things would change. Only thing changed on Holly Drive was my taxes. You charge before taxes and you less. Because that mess on Holly Drive, that we've been talking about for twenty years, and you kept doing the same thing for twenty years, and you done enough. It's right now, my house is right there with a six foot fence around it. People try to cause that mess. I got one camera trying to cause that six foot fence. And I got daylog cameras, I got a whole bit. Uh, trash and daylog on one house. I got plates, I got everything, I'm picking up every kind of junk you want. I had, he's had jumping that yard since before December last year. I stay out of my house from August of twenty-three until October of twenty-four. There's so much junk, trash, not, not hurting the trash, this is trash on something else. This is not, and that noise goes on all night long, I don't know, everybody's building all night long. And cars around there all night long, I have feared I'd get, why would somebody building something at three o'clock in the morning? We got junk going all down there, and nobody appears, and got all kinds of stuff. Houses are in the store, on the stall, some of them have a store, some of them just nasty. But they go over to your yard, and you don't want that trash in your yard. But that also won't do anything. He won't call for pickup, or you got a paper, if you pick up. So we got all kinds of trash, furniture and everything piled up. So why don't you go right down to Holly Drive today? Don't wait tomorrow, just drive down there, you be here today. And see what a mess a residential area has, and only about sixteen houses, and some of them are beautiful now. Because that's too much junk, too much stuff. So why don't you go just drive down and see if it'll tell us the truth? And it's gonna sit in your chairs, just drive down to Holly Drive. Find your son. Uh, decrease my taxes, and I have to pay taxes on two places, so decrease mine. Because we're not doing anything. I had to pay over a hundred fifty thousand for that house. Got off the city, I paid, I had.
Are you saying, are you guys who should be heard at this time? Say, now, buzz out the sports for the E J, along with the city managers with words, too?
Thanks, sir. Mayor, this upcoming weekend, uh, we have a lot going on. I invite everyone to come out to Love Ridge Road Clean Up. Volunteers will be at twenty-one, forty-five, Bees Road, to begin the cleanup. Uh, the designated cleanup route will cover Bees Road to Marrows Road, community moves. All are encouraged to participate and help to provide a shift. Ten A M on Saturday, just about P M. S G M C, the inaugural Touch and Truck Event, location, S G M C, Hump Professional Building, hosted by S G M C. This is a family friendly event. I will feature city of all of the public works, fire and police department vehicles, that will be on display. A great opportunity for churches and families to come out, see, touch, and to explore the services, service vehicles up close. Ending that evening, twenty twenty-five Isaiah City Civic Club Seventh Annual Pub Round, hosted in downtown Valdosta. Proceeds with benefit, hospital allowance, and apples county, allocation for children in the foster care system. Attendees can enjoy local pubs while supporting a great cause.
Would you like to, yes, sir? Would you like to have some comments? Counsel, give it down. Say. Good. Uh, I'll just add that, uh, April eleventh and twelfth should be in your calendar, the third annual Blueberry Festival, that you depart from downtown. We got, we can start at five o'clock on Friday, we can start back up at eleven o'clock on Saturday. We got April eleventh and twelfth, the third annual Blueberry Festival, free, which will help, um, lots of food trucks, lots of funds. We'll, we'll put thirty thousand people through downtown today and after. Tim?